Mr. Focus.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Skorzinski.
Here.
Mr. Cronin.
Here.
Mr. Jevens.
Here.
Mr. Sartorius.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve the agenda, but I see that the committee as a whole does not have a public comment on it, so I'd like to add that. Right at the beginning there after the approval, for the approval, the objections to that. So we need a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
Sir.
All with a favor, I.
I.
Jose. Okay, we do have a couple of comments. Chris Carroll, he wants to speak about the kids participating in Minooka Indian sports.
Can you just say stay seated or?
Yeah, whatever you want.
Board members, as some of you know, my mother has eight children. My two oldest graduated from District 201 and now attending them at the high school. Last year I had three children attending 201 schools and next fall I will have two, one kindergartner and one second grader at our table. There are still two more little grandchildren at home who will also be attending 201 schools in future. I think it's obvious that I'm thoroughly invested in this district and that I believe in public education. That being said, I also believe in the uniqueness of each individual. I recognize that there are certain times in life when we must be able to acknowledge that our kids' needs change. Not every child is the same and school experiences are not static. What works for one child one year may not be the best for them next. It's my job as a parent to determine what is best for my children. Tim and I have decided that our seventh grader and our fifth grader would be best served by being homeschooled for a time. This choice should not be interpreted as a criticism of District 201 or a public school in general. Clearly, with four other children still all attending public schools, I haven't thrown in the towel or given up on that path. There are many wonderful things that can only be experienced as a district student. First, students have an opportunity to develop great relationships with teachers and coaches. These are often the people who impact our kids for the better forever. Also, students have an opportunity to develop great relationships with their teammates. They share common goals and learn to respect and appreciate one another as peers. Last, students have an opportunity to be part of the Minooka Indian family. They get to experience the responsibilities and the pride that come from representing their community as an Indian. I'm here tonight to ask the board members to acknowledge the needs of all the children of the district. I'm here to ask the board members to recognize that all kids who live in the district, whose parents pay faithfully their fair share in property taxes, which help to fund our schools, all our kids deserve these same opportunities. And I'm not alone in asking for this to be acknowledged. State of Illinois law states that equal access must be granted to all district students, both in-school students and homeschool students. What I'm asking of the board tonight is to create a policy which would allow homeschooled kids the same opportunities to play for and represent the Minooka Indian teams. I'm not asking for any special privileges or loopholes. I'm only asking for my children, as well as any other homeschool children who are interested in participating in sports, to be allowed the same opportunity as their peers in the community. In my particular situation, I have two children who would love to run for the Minooka Indians. It would be so wonderful for my kids to maintain their connections with their wonderful coaches and their teammates. I also want to add that welcoming all the community's kids benefits the students who attend Minooka schools as well. We talk a lot about diversity, tolerance, and acceptance of differences in our schools. What better hands-on, real-life example can we offer the students of Minooka schools? They would learn that even those kids who don't walk to St. Paul's on Monday through Friday care about Indian pride, care about working hard, practicing, sacrificing for the good of the team. I'd like to offer to help those board members on the policy committee develop an appropriate policy that everyone could feel comfortable with. I know that if we sit down and talk about it, we can find a way to develop a policy that affords equal opportunity to homeschooled kids to participate in school sports. Thank you.
Well stated, and I will turn that over to a policy committee for them to.
So we don't have that today?
I thought we did.
I thought we did, because I, my daughter has some friends that were homeschool that we had.
For 201?
201, yeah. That was.
But we will look into it.
Yeah, four years for five days.
Yeah, thank you. And Michael Bosso.
Uh, hang on a second.
And what is your, your comments are about one of our board members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we're gonna have that in the executive session.
Okay.
So we'll do that in the executive session, sorry.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. In here enrollment.
Right. Let me, you have on your tables, there is the latest stamping enrollments. As of, it's dated June 24th. It's got green and yellow on it. I just wanted you to look at that. That is, up to the last moment where we are kindergarten-wise and the numbers we have per section, as well as the number of people who are looking for half day versus full. You'll see that in each of the four elementary schools right at this point where we've got very nice small numbers. Aside from, I mean, Nook Elementary, right now we only have four sections hired, so that would be twenty-two point seven-five. I, I'm certainly not asking for people at this particular point, but I guess I kind of would like to get a feel for where you are. The numbers are very low and we certainly would like to keep them around twenty-two or twenty-three. I guess if no other students showed up, we'd probably just fill the one at the elementary school. I don't know that we would need any others at this point. However, we still have a couple of registration days that have to come around yet and some time at some of the schools that register late, so. I'm hoping that July would have better, more solid numbers for you, but I want you to know that's where we are at this particular point of numbers. Does anybody have a concern about those one way or the other?
Historically, how many, how many children could be on the roll in August?
We have sometimes a third of the kids sometimes show up then. It's just that late. We put out a lot of information. But, you know, last year in the sample two, unstable kids that were here for kindergarten, there were a hundred thirty-eight kids. We've got ninety kids, and, and maybe that could just be the cycle. But we anticipate for, I know I spoke with the principal, Jones, he thinks eighty, last year they had around eighty-four. That might not be too bad a number. It just seems we're a little low at this particular point on kindergarten. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Assuming, I know we'd like to keep a class size low, but when they're at eighteen and seventeen, I, I, I'm not ready to go over the edge just yet. It's important that we're all prepared there. The other thing I would draw your attention to on, just on these, you'll see there are the green ones on here, just so you know, those are people that we're hoping that you'll approve tonight. But again, you have the green ones, as well as you have the listings for the junior high and the intermediate. We have three or four other people. They just haven't been sent for prints. We just got information. We have a social worker and we've got a psychologist and some of the other more, if you will, difficult positions to find. Not that math and science and those aren't, but psychologists, they're kind of difficult. So we're in pretty good shape actually for hiring. We just have just a few certified positions left and probably more program assistance, that type of stuff. But we, we also, as a service to people who are looking to become professional, paraprofessionals, we offer the test here so they can take it as well. And we've been having people since May, probably at least three or four people a month who are interested in coming to take the test. So it's matter of interest, but I, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. If you had any concerns or things that popped out of you that you wanted us to make sure we get attention to, otherwise we'll keep updating this and get back to you.
One of the next, there's two more registration dates?
Uh, one July and then we send out the information about going to the schools to do it as well. We have one more July, this is July.
Eighteen, I think it is, yeah. You usually have pretty good turnout.
I hope so. We have, last year we had a lot of people show up, probably for the workforce. I don't, I don't know why to combat that unless we do the process a little differently. Take our own backpack to have registration, as we've tried in the past to do, but a lot of people last year.
You know what?
Okay. The ones that you still have to give, the background checks, are they listed here tonight yet?
No, they're not, because their prints haven't come back and they've not come in necessarily. We didn't talk about salary back.
You know, when I look at the class sizes, it's either right now, so. If you look at the four grades below that, first, second, third, and fourth, and even if you take the smallest class, because there's always fluctuations in size, if it is at least as big as the smallest class, we have a lot of children still coming.
Yes.
Jones would have twelve kids, children coming. Off stable would have, let's see, the next smallest is a hundred and sixty? Twenty-six more children coming in there. That doesn't just compare to the first grade, but the smallest of the groups. Walnut, see Walnut, it's actually a little bit of a, or they're, they look like maybe they're right on target. And with Nook Elementary, with eighty-five, if they match the smallest group, which is the first grade, that's ninety-five. There's ten more, ten more children. There's probably fifty more.
Do we have teachers that might still be able to find other jobs that you could look at?
Yes. We have.
Approve at least one more?
We had hundreds of that, for the kindergarten. It was, it was tough, and I thought we'd get that. So do you, I just, you'd think we would have more numbers, however, again, you know, you see, you look third grade across the way, there was kind of a trouble. And then not so much, so, I don't know. It's not all, I, I hate to have to come to you in June and say, geez, or I mean, July and say, I'm not going to need two more people because we're at twenty-four, twenty-five kids.
Maybe still might do that.
And it was, and that, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, we can do that. Or, you know what, as we get closer, when people come in, and we do, if those numbers were just updated, you have.
Right.
Well, we, we, I think, we'll, we, we approve, uh, hiring based on.
Based on numbers, that is, I, I would love that, because then we can get started once.
Right.
Because then we could have that pretty much as scheduled, right?
Yes.
That would be great. And, and would that be maybe like a couple of people just?
Yes, I would say that if, if we could pre-approve for two more positions based on.
That would be fine. That'd be part of the registration. So we did it for the first person.
Yes.
Numbers that are based, let me, uh, state, between two hundred?
I think you just doubled what we have this year.
Or two. Again, oh, took a little half due, we had about four hundred thirty-some half day, or so that was around here. That, that's all. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay.
And I think, especially that wise, I think we're in pretty good shape. I talked to Tiffany and the principals and it seems like we're all maybe at a particular point. But that's always dependent on the people that come into the district. All right?
Okay.
Building grounds. The next one, there is buildings and grounds. You'll recall when Jerry is retiring October and we hired Kevin to fill his position. And then there has been discussion, in fact, we discussed it last month just briefly, about whether we would fill Kevin's position with one person or two people, just because of the size of the district and the necessity or, and the various maintenance things that are there that need to be done. There wasn't any final outcome on that one way or the other, so I did, I wanted to bring it to your attention as to what would be your pleasure. I know Jerry, I spoke with him and Kevin today, their preference still would be two people if it were all possible because of the numbers of things that need to be done. They would both be doing maintenance, but some of the things like the mail run, the mowing, all that type of stuff would still stay with those two maintenance people rather than having to have somebody else do it. I know it says in here, you know, there's a salary of maybe forty-five, as we even talked about that. If you, if the word was to approve two people, probably forty thousand if you look at that, because that's still nearly doubling their salary compared to what they would have been from what we did. So I don't, I don't know where the board is on this, but it's something I guess I'd like some discussion from you as to what is your preference.
Now, you're not really talking about adding two people, you're adding additional.
You're really adding one additional, because we're gonna split somebody from the two buildings. So it's really on additional, it's just a salary.
And when we think about that, we should keep in mind that our largest contractual deficit is already on the OIN Fund. We're hesitant to start adding to that. The OIN Fund has a deficit of seventeen percent of which is expected.
Do we have a breakdown of exactly what each of them would do that's, that much more? I mean, I don't.
I, I spoke with Jerry today, aside from whatever basic maintenance, this takes apparently a lot of time, keeping that up. The, the radiators that are there, the van type of stuff, servicing the different things that need to be done. And then those issues that come up, like with the water and all that type of stuff. I, I don't have to move this or. Go ahead, yes. That's what we want.
Food service.
Food service, you have in your packet there, I wanted you to be aware of that. Partly due to kindergarten and whole day and the number of students that are going to be needed, I'm sorry. Because of the number of students, the additional assistance that we're gonna need in the cafeteria to be able to meet the serving time. Couple of people like maybe have to be hired, but then a couple other people sometime will be extended. Still, they would be below that benefits, but it would cost around nineteen thousand dollars to be able to make sure that there's enough staff at each of the buildings to be able to serve everybody efficiently, get the food out while it's hot, warm, and the whole thing, and still be able to, and to get everything done, the cleaning and all those types of things. In addition, on the bottom page eleven, you saw the final green reduced numbers there, which it comes up, stays at that rate for the coming year. You'll see that as of October, not this year, but October of next year, those numbers stay. Many of us people have to have breakfast. And we have several others that are going to be close to that and don't have it all.
Do you offer it? You have to offer it if nobody takes it?
We have to offer it.
That's, that's.
Correct, but we do have to.
But it wouldn't actually happen until next year?
It wouldn't happen this fifteen, sixteen school year because we haven't made, the numbers are based on the nine thirty enrollment for the next year.
Okay.
So, because we were worried this year, because at the nine thirty enrollment this year, they were thirty-eight percent. But no, it's the year following when you hit that matching threshold of forty percent.
Is the federal reimbursement that pretty close to this point?
Yes, yes. It's substantially higher. It's not as good as free, but near. It's almost as, yes.
We have to do it in all schools, huh?
No, you, that would be an option the district could make, but you have to provide it in the one school that needs those requirements.
If, all right. If you provide it in the other schools, you wouldn't be a federal reimbursement?
Correct, correct.
But in one school, but then you'd be in one school. If, if that would.
It, it's, it's all based on free, on income. And so if a school with all the students that are there, including kindergarten, and this year we had to include the kindergarteners from here as well, by school, even though they work in schools, but if you have forty percent or more of your population that falls below the poverty line, then they're eligible for free meals or reduced meals. And in this case, it will be for free breakfast as well. So it has to do with the family income.
Do we send those particular kids to one school?
No, they go to all the schools.
Are you different?
How are they?
If you look at, if you.
Look at page, look at page eleven. You'll see at the bottom curtain, there are all the free and reduced, it's very bottom.
Oh, I see.
There's for every school, based on their population and the income and what parents do. You know, one of the things that has changed, that has really made a difference this year, I, I, you probably know a lot more about it, but we get direct certification in addition to parents building out a natural application for free or reduced meals. The direct certification comes from the state though, and we might question it, because there are some people who, we do question. But if it comes from the state, they're an automatic free, reduced, we wait fees, we have to do the whole thing there. And so a lot of these numbers really probably have gone up anywhere from five to seven or eight percentage points just based on the direct certification that we get from the state. Kind of a, a catch there. So we're, we're close. Aside from Walnut Trails, you can see we're at this thirty, it's not about anything. They're holding on, probably, as we now start to progress.
Looks like we may have a program which here, the elementary, all of the, we may be making up.
Who didn't place for everybody, then why, but the team's not got it, that's what it looks like.
I just got a question as I'm looking at the times that are most typical of it. Off stable gets twenty-five minutes to lobby the building. Just that was actually the time?
Um, but, that would be the times that they're gonna serve the food.
Serve everything?
Yes. It, and it may take a little while. Yeah, but, but by this there, yeah, because then you'd see second grade comes to eleven five. So you're saying there's a, there are twenty minutes?
There are twenty minutes.
Okay, no, no, you're right. I'll take on that.
Yeah, but I'll say, well, there, it's overlapping, maybe that's the reason. First grade couple, it's eleven, level five.
Yeah.
It seems like the other ones are, there's one class at a time.
They're separate, that's it, right. Thank you. They are overlap, and he has more kids as well. So that's one thing, we would need that approval to be able to hire additional staff or give a bit more time to be able to meet the needs of getting everybody through in those times so that they could get outside and run that stuff around as well. The personnel, you have that listed, I, I, those are all, we're just asking for your approval when you go through there, because there's a lot of them. That's that, unless you have a question. The nurse, I, I just, in the past, and some of you around the board, I think even then, we had a head nurse several years ago in Green and Yellow Seals here, it was a paid differentiator. So I always go to work, I'm trying to work with the M E S P, because now one nurse has to be required. They don't, they're, they're not a certified nurse from the point that they would be on the teacher's salary schedule. But they're a certified nurse for the classes, because we required this year to have one available for every staff or as appropriate that they need to be at. We have at least one nurse that has that certification right now, but we've not ever been able to get back to the head nurse, and it would really require a memorandum of understanding with the M E S P. So that's kind of where we are with it, but we probably will come back to you at some point and say, yeah, we're going to need this. In the past, it was like a one dollar differentiation, a dollar per hour differential or that head nurse, but that's come.
We're still in that negotiation, yes, right.
It's so, no, no action or anything is needed there. The district office, we talked about that, essentially, same with the bargaining, there's, I believe it's just kind of stopped at this point with the M E S P. The interfund loans, you saw in their request, we were requesting nine hundred thousand dollars. However, I guess it's a good, we really don't need nine hundred thousand dollars. We started to get a little bit of tax money, I feel we have about a hundred thousand dollars. So probably we don't actually have eight hundred thousand, but we might get it, it's maybe up to.
I'm still only temporary going anyhow, does it just go right back?
Once you check, so that's exactly right. The M D A bargaining contract, you have that. We met with the association the other day just to go through it and make sure we were all kind of talking the same language. Our focus said you would approve that. There were probably, I'm sure, I mean, I know you're not interested probably, but there were seven little errors or spaces or letters or something like that that we changed after we met with them. But we're hoping that the regular board meeting will approve that. Vicki and I, if there's anything else you'd like to say about.
But we discussed it, the regular board meeting, if you have any questions. We were there for all the meetings.
We actually talked about that and talked about, I guess it's a lot of conversation that we're wanting to spend. We're putting together, but, I could call them.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So as we do that, I think we should keep some things in mind. So there's been a lot of talk about the need for an education fund referendum. And a certain amount, I think, of unnecessary discussion of cutting, possibly cutting teachers' programs if we don't have that referendum. But I think if we look at the, the data and where we actually are, there's no need to talk about the possibility of teachers' support programs without an education fund referendum. I remember that discussion. What about an education?
No, no, about cutting.
Oh.
I don't agree with discussions about.
Well.
That was never considered.
Former superintendent said that without an education fund referendum, there would be no place where we have to cut programs or teachers. I mean, if you guys agree that that's not the case. I mean, if you guys agree that that's not the case, then, then I guess a lot of this is not necessary because our largest financial problems are not in the education fund. They are in the O and M and the transportation fund. If you look at the expenditure report and the revenue report that we got, and you could actually just go back to the budget and look at it and crunch the numbers. The deficit in the education fund, even though it's the largest by dollar, is the smallest by percent, it's two point three percent. It's six hundred and thirty-nine, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So. I'm glad you're agreeing with the words on cutting of programs or teachers because as our revenue goes up, as the economy slowly recovers from two things, one, the property values of existing properties, two, additions are coming online. The only thing we need to do to balance the ed fund is actually have some more fiscal discipline about spending. And that goes into all of these things that we're talking about, the staff salaries, the M E A, the M E S P. Now, the M E A, D E A agreement is a three-year agreement. And I guess one of the things that I take with that is revenue supermining. And to some extent, if we agree to a three-year contract there and then agree to a three-year contract with the M E S P, we're tying their hands, right, blocking in those expenditures over three years. And, you know, the, the M E A agreement has a four percent raise over three years. Let me just give you an idea of what could actually easily close the gap. We're talking about a four percent increase there, we're talking about a four percent increase in administrative staff salaries. I assume the M E S P is gonna say, four percent, four percent, it's gonna be a four percent. The difference between just a three percent raise over three years and a four percent raise over each of three years is roughly six hundred thousand dollars, which is a deficit in our definition.
But we're not, you're preempting some of our negotiations here, especially with the M E S P.
Yes, and I'm preempting them for a reason.
Well, I understand that, but let's let our people negotiate that instead of setting our.
Jim, I think the point that I'm trying to make is that we need to keep this in mind while we're.
Well, and I hope we do with our negotiations, we have, you know, we have people doing that. That's what, that's what we're looking to do.
But we don't have a multi-year plan to erase this deficit. We sit here and we discuss these things as kind of one-off things, not as an overarching plan to get back to a balanced budget, right? If we had an overarching plan and said, here's how we get to a balanced budget in three or four years. Okay? And then we said, we can afford this, this and this. And then the negotiation is saying, okay, we can afford this, we can afford this raise and it fits into the puzzle here. And then the next negotiation, and it fits here. Then I would say that this is not necessary. But without a plan, all we do is approve these things, one, like onesies and twosies. And then, we're, when we create the budget, we have to take those things as given rather than saying, what can we afford? And then, and then fitting the pieces into the puzzle. We're creating the puzzle pieces and then jamming them together. And then we have a picture that may not work.
Okay, I understand that, Doug. We've got people that are going to be working on that and your information to them for working on that is.
But who's putting the budget together?
Well, right now, Dr. Collin, financially, they're working on that right now. It isn't there yet. But what's your information on the ex?
Just a question, how are you putting the question? What are some concerns are you, have we given you any direction as to we wanna have a balanced budget? Or we're okay with the deficit? It'd be you. Right, but our job as a board is to give direction to the administration.
I think you've just done that something.
I didn't realize that I could have that power.
Well, you just, it's not power, it's the information that you just gave.
Right, but I think it would be helpful to the administration because this board acts as seven members you discussed in both, right?
Yes.
And so one, one member giving them direction, they're legally obligated to follow.
No, you're not giving them direction, you're giving them information.
Okay, again, yeah, the information's all there, but we as a board need to give the administration the direction. Otherwise, all due respect to Dr. Collin, if he's doing this blind.
And we will be doing.
He's just taking, you're probably just taking the old budget and saying, well, I'm gonna increase it by certain.
What's in his mouth and what he's doing.
Okay. How are you putting it?
I have to start someplace, whether it's.
So explain to me how you're putting the budget together.
Collin and I are looking at what's been done over the past couple of years and then we'll go from there and we'll visit.
So you have last year's budget?
And the year before.
Right, with all the various numbers. So when you're constructing this budget, what kind of growth are you assuming? Zero growth, one percent, two, three, you have to assume something.
Not yet, he's working on it. You don't assume anything, you work on it and try to develop it. You don't assume that, you develop it.
Okay, you have to assume something.
You want to assume this.
How do you develop the budget?
By looking at all the costs and the figures and the things that you have to do and the things you have to make for, right? You do it by what, the figures that are there and the things that you have to do.
All right, the only figures that are there are historical data. Well, if, if all we do is enter the last year's spending, that's, that's easy. But we're, we're talking about things that are raising the largest component of the budget. If you look at the ed fund, the salaries and.
If, like you said, if we do that, we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So it's an if, you can do a lot of ifs, let's work on the budget.
So when the budget is done?
Yes.
Is then the time to talk about.
Yeah, because you get the budget, we're only in thirty days.
Right, we never talk about budget.
Well, we can.
But you're telling me I don't need to?
No, you don't have a budget to talk about yet.
Well, Doug's trying to.
I'm trying to start a conversation so that we can, as a board, give direction to the administration as to how to put the budget together. Because the requirement is that we approve a budget by the end of the first quarter, which is September, right?
Yes.
And the other requirement is that we have to have a preliminary budget on file for public viewing, thirty days before we approve a funding grant. So typically, what's happened in the past is we get a preliminary budget, we get a chance to ask questions.
Yes.
It never really changes. Whatever, I mean, you can look back to the last years, the preliminary budget basically becomes the budget. Okay? And as many, and as many times as I say, I think it would be good that we have a discussion about the budget and where we're going, we never do.
We can have that or not have it, the choice is the board, will be made by the board as a whole.
I'd like to have a special meeting to discuss the budget as we're going.
No, but. And we might do that, so you can request that, or please do it.
Okay, but, but we're sort of putting it hard before, before the course, right? If we have that discussion after we approve all the raises, it really doesn't matter because it doesn't inform our decision making, right? Our, our goal to get to a balanced budget doesn't then inform the decisions. The decisions are made and we're stuck with whatever effect that they have on the, on the expenditure side of the house. Okay?
I understand.
I'd rather have the discussion about where we wanna be. I mean.
So we should have a vision out of the plane.
I mean, my, my vote would be to get to a balanced budget. And in, and in the ed fund, I think that's relatively easy. We just have to control costs as the, as the revenue increases.
So what is the latest that you can vote on a raise? Does it have to be today or can you, because you're going to the fiscal year, can you wait thirty more days?
It can actually be retroactive and it has been sometimes in the past. And that's, you know, part of that is, he's right, we do have new superintendent coming. I very much like to have him as part of doing so. And that's why we haven't done anything with the M E S P yet, is because we're kind of waiting, because we'd really like to have him.
Right, so that's like the tail, that's like the tail wagging the dog, right? Because the big contract is the M E A.
And that one's done.
And then the other, the other contract tends to follow from that and so do the administrative raises. And so once you approve that, it's almost, it's harder to then take the other ones.
And that's what I just said, it doesn't have to be approved on that method. You know, if we come down to the, put it down the line in October and say, four percent's okay because we're looking at the budget, we can retroactively put it there. If we come down to October and say, the money's not there, it doesn't get retroactive. It doesn't get, what is that?
Yeah, but I think we should have the discussion sooner rather than later. Well, yes, we should have done it last year or the year before or the year before that. But if. All right, but if we agree to a three-year contract right now, we're tying, tying their hands.
We haven't, we haven't got a three-year contract yet.
I mean, because, because in, in my mind, you know, you have to consider Plan B. And if you, if you create a cost structure that's unaffordable under current revenue structures, right? And then the only way to fix that is to go to the taxpayers and ask for more money. If the taxpayers say no, then you are looking at cutting jobs and cutting programs. And I, I don't wanna be in that position, right? I mean, it's one thing to go to the, to the taxpayers and say, we wanna offer new programs or we have class sizes that we think are unreasonable and we want the money to, you know, deal with that and go out for a referendum. But in my mind, it's quite another thing to, to create a cost structure that's unaffordable like current expenditures and then tell the taxpayers that they have to approve the referendum or else, or else this, or else that.
And Doug, you will have the opportunity to vote that.
When?
Well, if we approve or don't approve the increases.
But if we always talk about talking about it, then we never actually talk.
Well, you just talked about it, so you get to vote your way, then everybody else will get to vote their way.
It's, it's, it's much nicer to have a long-term plan. I mean, like I said, in my mind, the education fund is the easy of the three large deficits. We're gonna have to have really serious discussions about the O and M fund and the transportation because the O and M fund deficit is seventeen, almost eighteen percent, and the transportation fund is thirteen percent.
And we're, we're carrying a balance that will carry us for some period of time.
Well, that's why we have the luxury that if we act now, or if we had acted last year.
Now we can keep that surplus.
Well, we can make program changes over time rather than making drastic changes once the money. Right, the problem with running a deficit is that we, we have surpluses, but eventually the surpluses run out.
Absolutely, but.
And then, and then you have to make drastic changes.
And, and we're up, we've been over the years balancing that against the, where we're anticipating increases coming in, like you said, how the prices are going, the values are going, how the industry's coming in. So we have to balance that with that, too.
All right, and, and in the education fund, we're talking about a small percentage deficit. That, I think, is a viable solution. But in the other funds, where the, where the deficit is so much larger, I don't think that's gonna be a viable solution.
That's what we'll be working on the budget for. All right.
It'd be nice to schedule a special meeting about that.
So should we wait off the superintendent or do you wanna do it before?
Well, I would rather wait for the superintendent because they're, they're, you know, they're the ones that would be giving direction.
The problem is we can't wait very long because we have a time frame and we have to get it done by two.
Well, what if we, what if we approve the first year of the contract?
Well, and then there's a possibility.
Rather than approving it.
And that, and that's a possibility.
Then we've only tied our hands for one year and we can actually take a real hard look at this stuff and either say, yes, we can afford the other two years at four percent, or maybe we can afford them at three percent. Right, there's something that we can afford. But, but without setting out a plan and projecting.
You know, I'd like to.
It's like throwing.
I'd like to object to it. Over the course of the last couple of months, we've asked the board to, to that bargaining here. And we received input from the press. And what you're saying is not to say one quick input that we received early.
Well, I think partly it is.
Maybe partly, yeah.
What else?
Maybe part, but maybe not. And I started switching in, in direction. That's not a good way to allow speakers to be.
Well, how is it a sudden switch in direction? I, I kinda feel like a broker. I've been talking about the same thing like every year, I'm sure people are. And that's why people in the audience think I sound like a broker too.
Well, and that's why we have some people on the board who are gonna be standing in and spoken on it. Okay, let's move on. Kindergarten iPad.
You were, you asked last time that we would ever look at non-Ipad devices. We did, we've looked at the iPad minis as well. As you can see, just from what I wrote, and Aaron is here, does substantiate, about sixty percent of the applications are not applicable to, on non-Apple devices. We purposely also this year looked at using iPads in the kindergarten because of ease of use, because of the things that you do and whatnot. And the classroom, the teachers and the students, and the parent feedback that we got is very positive. I realize they're more costly, but there are benefits to, you know, there is some discount, if you will, to buying those apps as opposed to the non-Apples as well. But in the meantime, we also did look at iPad minis that are about approximately ninety-five dollars cheaper than the full iPad. We had teachers look at it, we had kids look at it, I played with it. And the cost differential between the full-size iPad and the iPad minis is about nine thousand dollars. We would still stay with the recommendation to the board that we go with the iPads however we would do iPad needs.
Who would be the reason for that, for that, in the first place, if they're here?